Hello.
Well, it's seven o'clock, so I think we can get underway. This is the Sherburne Zoning Board of Appeals. We have closed the hearing for College Crossing, and we are now in discussion of our decision. Gents, because we observe our open meeting law requirements and don't talk to each other outside these hearings, I'm dying to hear how you guys feel about all this having listened to it all. And maybe I'd like to start off with some sort of first impressions where you think we ought to go on this one before we dive into all the details. Mr. Stefan, would you like to start?
Um, I don't really have a clear picture where we should go, to be honest with you. Maybe you could help me with this.
Okay, well, sure. We have, we have, as always, three choices, well, sort of four choices. One of them is gone. We can try to dispose of a an application on grounds of towns within a safe harbor or something like that. But those, but we would have had to raise those long time ago.
Right.
Um, so then we are down to our usual three choices. We can deny it outright if we think there's good grounds for that. We can grant it with no conditions, if that's what we want to do, or the more common is door number three, where we grant it with conditions. So, within those three choices. Do you have any thoughts, or do you want to defer and let Mr. Fitch go first?
Uh, I think we're, I, I, I think we should go in the direction of granting it with conditions. And there's some obvious conditions. I don't know if we have clarification on sewer and water at this point or not, for instance.
Um, yeah, I, I, I think we, um, I think we do not, other than the clarity that we do have, which is the applicant understands that this is absolutely going to be conditioned on them getting public water and sewer. And we know they're making progress on that. We know they're not there yet. I think a, an ENF was filed today, which is a step ahead, but there's still many steps in their road. And I see their heads nodding, so I think I got that, it was close to right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on that.
Uh, just briefly, because it's supposed to be the board discussing, but yes.
Okay, sorry. The, I, I know that Pulte has met with the mayor and the mayor's council. The mayor's very much in favor. There's been discussions with the city council, and I believe to this point, the city council is in favor as well.
Okay, and, and that's all good, but, but our hearing is closed, so we've got to go based on what, what we've heard already, uh, which was very consistent. Uh, Mr. Fitch, where are you on all of this?
Well, I agree with Ron. I think that the comprehensive permit should be approved. And I'm, uh, not during what conditions there should be attached to it. The applicant has submitted a, a list of requested waivers and has indicated with respect to some of the very I think significant concerns raised by the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission and neighbors that it was willing to make certain concessions. Uh, I think in their final list of requested waivers, they made reference to some correspondence indicating willingness to work on certain issues. But I, I think I've probably already made it clear that I think that this is a, a very well-conceived project. The town has obviously pursued this local initiative. Uh, and there is a lot of support for it. I, I think that we have a very responsible and experienced development team. And I, I really don't have, uh, there are a lot of unknowns, obviously. I drive by this site every single day on my way to work. And I, it, it's hard for me to imagine what it's going to be like visually. It, it really is. But, uh, in any event, I I think that the town has a need for affordable housing and, and this project addresses that need. Hundred and twenty units with um, twenty-five percent affordable and I there are no specific conditions that come to my mind, right, right now.
Um, well, it won't surprise you at all, having sat through the hearings together, that I'm, I'm pretty much on the same page as, as both of you. Um, which is that this is a, this is in the grant with conditions category. And then the wood we have to chop, um, and there's some wood to chop, is, uh, is, uh, what exactly are those conditions? Uh, because the sense of the board is to grant with conditions, I will now reveal that the developer had already sent me a draft decision. And I will, at this point, ask, um, Jeannie to send it to both of you. I didn't want to distribute it before this sort of initial sense of the board, because I didn't want to give the implication uh, that, uh, that the vote had been, or any sense of the board had been discussed yet. Um, so Jeannie, if you can send them Stephanie's, um, draft decision. But if you can also, and you don't have to do this right now, if you can get, uh, both Stephanie and Town Council Mike Terry, the decision from, um, fifty-nine North Main Street, which was our most recent forty B. Because Stephanie, there's some various things the town has done in the past that I think you'll want to look at, and Mike is, Mike will want to look at. Things like backup affordable housing covenants, if the state statute went away, that sort of stuff. Um, and, and that, that will be, that part, I think, will be easy to work out. I think the hard part, gentlemen, will be working out exactly what the conditions are. And while I've got some to talk through with you tonight, I haven't inventoried them all, because it wasn't clear that that's the direction we were going to go. Um, we need to, and Stephanie, double check me on this, to be honest. I believe our decision needs to be filed with the town clerk no later than Monday, June eighteen, unless you extend. And I, I know, can you even extend that one if you wish? I guess, yes, you can. I saw that in the regs. Um, whoops, Stephanie, you're muted, sorry.
I was, I was just gonna say, that one usually is not extended, but, um, you know, we, we, we can talk, yeah.
Well, let's, uh, I, I think all of us would like to get it off our plate anyway. Um, and, and, uh, and so if, to the extent that we can meet that deadline, I, I think we're going to try to do so. So, gents, if we're trying to be, uh, signed in in town hall by Monday, the eighteenth, um, or by Monday, the twenty-first, I think that means we probably ought to plan on signing the, um, the seven, no, no later than the, the eighteenth, so we probably ought to have our final, me, final meeting about the seventeenth, which is a little more than two weeks, so we've got a lot of ground to cover. What I would suggest to you is that we have a couple of short meetings as opposed to several long ones. Um, it, it, and, but I'm also open to better ideas. Um, and what I thought we might try to do tonight was talk through some of the areas of conditions. And that may be, if there's another meeting in, say, a week, I could try to come back with a list and maybe a rough form of decision for everyone to look at. And then maybe we could finalize the decision at a third meeting just before, just before it gets signed and filed, and then we'd, then we'd be in compliance, and Stephanie wouldn't have to give us a an extension. We wouldn't have to ask her for one. Does that sound like a process that makes sense to either of you?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it does, does, Rick.
Okay, all right, um, so let's, um, pull out a calendar and just try to set that next meeting, or at least target it. Right, and Jeannie, you don't have the draft decision yet, so I'll, I'll send it to you afterwards.
Okay, fine.
Um, okay, so let me go back to the calendar here, um, moment. All right, so we can't, gents, we can't do the ninth, because we're tied up that night. Could we have a relatively, and I can't do the eighth. Um, but could we do a relatively brief meeting on the evening of the tenth? That's a Thursday.
Yes, emphasis on brief, yep.
Okay, Mr. Stefan?
Yeah, it's okay with me.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Would, would that be, I have a, I have a hearing that night. It starts at seven PM, so if the, if your meeting is before seven PM.
Um, well, um,
my, my hearing on the tenth is probably going to go like two and a half hours, so.
Right, is, um, is there any way anybody could cover for you? We also may not need, need you for that meeting. Um, I, I'm mindful of the, of the time crunch.
Yeah.
But also limited on what days we can go with. Let me just take a look here.
So we'll have a, a draft tonight, uh, and the benefit of some discussion, Rick. So, uh, the three of us will have an opportunity to work on this draft uh, until we are next together. We won't exchange any, uh, any drafts among, amongst ourselves, I take it.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, I think that, uh, Town Council isn't down, but I'm fairly sure that would not be kosher under the open meeting law. Um, we're certainly allowed to work on it separately, but I don't think we can be exchanging drafts, uh, with each other outside the process. Um, okay, but, um, the, um, and, and it'll probably be tomorrow, because I'll have to wait till after after, just to circulate what, what Ms. Kiefer had, had sent. And then Jeannie can send what, um, what we've done for fifty-nine North Main Street, and I think that'll give us sort of the bones. Turning, turn, turning back to the date, Ms. Kiefer, I've I don't see a really good, uh, alternative to the, uh, to, to the tenth. The seventh is too soon. Um, eighth and ninth are out. The eleventh is a Friday, and then, then you're into the next week.
Right, okay, I, I, uh, will, uh, check with my office to see if I can.
What about, what about starting at six on the tenth?
Um, well, that, that, that could work for me. Would that work for you, Jonathan? Do you have to come back from downtown?
Yep, but I'll, I'll be back.
All right, um, could six o'clock work for you, Ron?
Yeah, sure.
All right, so we'll start at six o'clock on June ten. It's a great solution, Jonathan, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, all right, so, and then we can set, then, once we're there on the tenth, we can set the next, the next meeting, that'll give us, uh, a little time between, between uh, the, there we are on the deadline. Um, do you want to spend a few minutes talking about some of the things that we think are sort of clearly in and clearly out on the conditions list? I, I think the idea of, of, of off-site sidewalks to downtown was raised. I, 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 I suggest we have to put that on the clearly out list. It's outside our powers. The applicant doesn't own the land. I looked at the regulations again today, and Stephanie doesn't even have to walk me through it. It's, it's prohibited that we do, that we require them to do offside stuff. So, I guess I'd like to suggest to you, gents, that, that that one not make the list.
Well, I agree.
I, I agree, I agree with you.
Okay, um, likewise, I don't think we can require the developer to wait for general chemical to be fully cleaned up. They had offered a condition that, um, I'm going to paraphrase it wrong, was they would wait for, sort of to the end of phase one, which I think is supposed to wrap up this summer. And I think we should put that in. But there was some suggestion from the abiders that they should have to wait till all of general chemicals fully cleaned up, and again, I don't think we can make a local needs case for that. Thoughts?
Well, uh, on what basis would you, uh, tie, uh, that condition to our decision?
That's the point, is, there's, there's, other than the fact that the abiders wanted, there's, there's, I can't see any tenable legal ground to do so.
Okay, well, I I can't think of one myself.
Okay, um, likewise, there was discussion of, uh, the access road and the gating, and I believe the developer offered to, uh, put up a gate at a walk-around on their site, but that they declined to put up gates up on, uh, where the, where the main road connects through the Pulte property, uh, and the Pulte property connects up to, uh, the gray road, that's it, the paper road that's up there. Uh, and again, I think, I don't think that's something we can do. Arguments, disagreement?
No, I agree with you, Rick.
Um, well, I, I, I agree also, but when you say it's not something we can do, the developer's response to that was uh, negative, but they did offer, uh, some concession that seemed to be within their control.
Yes, correct, on, on their site. I, I was talking about, I, I don't think we have the power to make them go offsite to the gray road.
Totally, absolutely.
Um, uh, likewise, with respect to water, there had been requests from the abiders that, um, the project extend, necessarily extend water to their, to their homes and/or put up bonds, uh, in case something happened, um, to their, to their water supply. And, uh, my, my sense is, like, some of the other things, like general chemical, the nexus between this project and that problem is, is, is quite attenuated. Um, and we need a very strong nexus, uh, to fit within the stowcase for turning them down or conditioning them in that, so I, I, I think, unless you guys heard it differently or have better ideas, I think the best we can do on that is to, to condition any blasting they do on those guidelines that the Board of Health gave us, um, because that is the activity on this site, which is most likely to threaten the water supplies of the neighbors. And, and even that likelihood is, is fairly low, but um, you know, we, we can certainly try to offer them some protection there.
Well, I, I recall, I recall a discussion about uh, providing, uh, water in the street in Meadowbrook. And, uh, that clearly, oh, was, was not a, not agreed to by the, uh, developer. On the other hand, there was a discussion about putting a connection in as, as the main came, you know, at Meadowbrook Road, so that if it was desired to have water in Meadowbrook Road, that connection could be easily made. And, uh, it's not clear in my mind whether we made any, uh, conclusion about whether a connection point would be included or not.
Uh, Jonathan may have a better recollection, recollection than mine. My recollection was that the developer indicated that while the cost of putting a water main down Meadowbrook was extraordinarily high and not something they would do or could do, um, the relative cost of putting in, I'll, I'll have the wrong term for it, but I'm going to call the valve uh, that would serve Meadowbrook, uh, as, as the pipe went by, might not be terribly expensive, and I, I think they were agreeing to request that of Pulte in the, in the process. And also, I saw between the lines encouraging, um, parties to, in the, in the planning board special permit process, make that a condition of the special permit. Because Pulte is going to be building the line, and Pulte will be building right past their property, but Jonathan, what's your recollection?
Well, I was, uh, really waiting to hear, uh, what you recalled developer's response to that was. And, uh, I think that, uh, those, uh, the neighbors on Meadowbrook were, uh, encouraged to work in the future towards having that connection put in uh, when the pipe is laid past the street. Uh, now, again, that's, uh, is off the site, and, uh, I'm not clear on what basis we could require the applicant to, to put that in.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that if you'd like me to.
Please go ahead. I was just about to follow on you, sir.
Okay, so what we're talking about is putting in a gate valve. Because if you don't, if you don't do a gate valve, you would have to do a wet tap, which is significantly more expensive in the future. And I, in fact, did have a conversation with Pulte, and I can say that, assuming things go well with their permitting process, they would be amenable to putting that gate valve in.
All right, so if we make our condition that you will, um, uh, diligently seek Pulte putting in a gate valve and cooperate in that process, uh, just that sort of soft comfort, that sounds like a condition you could live with.
That is correct.
Okay, word numbers make some sense to you?
Yes, perfect sense, thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, um, another one that was on my list was, uh, bedrock disruption, but I think that's easy. The Board of Health uh, sent us some standards. Uh, these guys aren't planning on doing much blasting anyway, so uh, we'll put it in and, and, and they'll either be able to live with it, or if they can't, like, they can come back to us, but I, I bet they'll be able to live with it.
Um, I, I think in their, excuse me, I didn't.
Please, no, no.
Uh, I believe that in their, uh, final, uh, list of requested waivers, they did refer to the blasting, and they asked for some leeway on, uh, the notice period. Uh, so they, they, they didn't, uh, agree, uh, to strictly comply with the, the Board of Health requirements, but within this, within the spirit, they did, and, and they, they just asked that, that, uh, the, the condition allowed them, I think, more than seven days, which is
I, I think that's right. That, that's the way I was reading it as well. And that's, that's a good correction, thank you. Um, on landscaping and wildlife corridors, I think I need to go back and review the bid ask, bid ask, bid ask, bid ask. Um, but I believe it's settled out at, at something we can probably articulate. Um, the parties did not seem far apart on that. At the end of the day, um, there were some things the conservation commission wanted, but wasn't necessarily going to get. But they reserved their rights to, to re-raise those in, in their state law cons comm process, and my, my read of the developer team was that they were fine with that. Um, so I, I think that's a drafting issue as opposed to a substantive, uh, stumbling block. Did you guys hear it differently than that?
No, no, that's pretty much how I heard it.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, likewise, um, traffic safety, I need to go back and review the bid ask with the, uh, peer reviewer and the engineer, but I, I believe they settled on, um, on, on a set of plans and recommendations that the developer could live with and that the peer reviewer thought was a good, safe design practice, and so I suggest we just bake that into our decision that way.
Hmm.
Okay.
I agree.
Um, those were the ones I wrote down. Ms. Kiefer, let me flip through your decision. Because there, I'm sure there are more. Uh, people listening out there don't, don't think that those are going to be just the conditions, but I just wanted to hit, hit some that I remembered particularly from the, um, oh, and, um, while we're talking about the form of decision, um, Ms. Kiefer, one thing we'll do is just have at the beginning, um, and we, and we'll prepare some narrative about sort of how we got here, the history of the town, the history of the project, where we are in our exemption process and are not, um, and what we've done, uh, just because God forbid, this is, this, uh, decision is being reviewed in, in a litigation context, that's always, uh, always helpful to have those facts out on the table. Um, all right, so let's see. You went with these plans.
I, I have a question about the record.
Yes, sir.
Are, are all, uh, the documents in the record, those that are posted on the town uh, website? Um, I, I, I was wondering if there are documents in addition that were, that were filed with, with Jeannie or emails uh, that were somehow, uh, part of this process, which haven't been posted. So I'm just not clear how we know what the inventory of the record really is.
Well, um, Town Council could probably give a better answer than, than mine. But mine would be that, uh, Jeannie and I certainly tried to, whenever there was any substantive, uh, uh, filing or commentary, whether it showed up in a letter or an email or whatever, that it would go up on the website, um, which is a matter of convenience to the public, um, as opposed to a statutory requirement. And so, Jeannie, I'm looking at you. I think it's all there.
I mean, I, I'm pretty sure everything's up. I can do, I can do a search and, uh, double check. Um, I guess my question is, is does everything have to be printed out and stored in boxes, because I have yet to do that.
I, I think, I think ultimately that will probably have to happen.
Okay.
At, sort of continuing the answer to Jonathan's, uh, question, to the extent that there have been emails that aren't, um, substantive, that weren't published, but are relevant, they're probably public records uh, for Freedom of Information Act purposes. Um, I don't know if they are part of our record capital R. So, is that a responsive answer, Mr. Justice?
Yep, just behind, thank you.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying. I recall past, uh, projects we've reviewed, and I recall having a list of actual list of documents, of everything that is current and will be attached to the decision.
Right, and, and, and sometimes depending on the length of the documents, we've said, here's the list of all the documents, and the documents are on file at the town hall, but someone can read a three-page, single-spaced list at the end of our permit and say, okay, where's my letter that I filed? Um, and see, it's there or it's not. And frankly, on, on the other project over at Hunting Lane, uh, where we've had miscues on filing something, it's usually someone who submitted it, or someone who was expecting to see, like, wait a second, where's my letter? It didn't get posted, and, you know, poor Jeannie is posting so much stuff, you know, one out of fifty fell, fell through the cracks, so I like her batting average.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I hope you don't mind. I asked Todd to send Jeannie over the decision so she can send it to the other board members.
We're not at all offended. Thank you for doing that.
I have it. I'll forward it in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And, 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 uh, Mr. McDowell, when Jeannie sends around the town's, the town's decision on fifty-nine, uh, do you want to get it, or do you just want your council to get it, or what, what's?
If we can both get it, that would be great.
It's only electrons. It's cheap to send.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, jumping back to the waivers for a moment. Or jumping back to the conditions. All right, so it looks like some of the, uh, items that were discussed in the course of the decision weren't necessarily, uh, baked into your form, Ms. Kiefer. This looks like this was sort of the generic forum on which you'd expect us to layer in project-specific conditions.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's a good template.
It's still helpful. We're still grateful. Thank you. Um, just sort of hoping to say, oh, great, look, it's all done for us. Uh, so still, still a little wood left to chop.
There is, there is some done, but.
Yeah, we know what I'm doing. It's a big help. Don't, don't misunderstand me. Um, all right, um, well, other board members, are there other, uh, items we want to, we want to talk about? I can flip through some of my notes, but because we had not yet decided this was the direction we were going, I didn't want to go uh, too far down that particular rabbit hole in advance. Uh, now that I know where we're going, um, I could head down the rabbit hole and be ready, be ready by the tenth. We're more ready on the tenth. Now that I know where we're going, um, I could head down the rabbit hole and be ready, be ready by the tenth, or more ready on the tenth.
Okay, well, thank you.
Alright, and, and, uh, not that you guys are off the hook, but let's assume I'm feeble-minded and forgetful. Um, and haven't written down all the conditions perfectly, if you would go through your notes or whatever you've, you've done. And sort of make a list of, here's what I think should be in, uh, the three of us can help prop each other up.
Have, have we compiled all of the suggested? Uh, conditions from all of the boards and commissions and our, uh. Our, uh, reviewer?
No, I mean, and, and that's sort of the next step, is pulling all those, all those puzzle parts together, and that's why I'm saying. Pull together the puzzle parts you can, and we'll, we'll work on it together. Okay. I mean, if, if we had a, if we had a professional staff who could do all this for us. That's great, and we have, we have, we have Jeannie, but, uh, it's not, it's not, not a fair, okay.
Why, I'm not a professional?
A professional staff with nothing else to do, Jeannie. But, you know, Jeannie, if you're volunteering. Those, all of those things and, and come up with an absolutely perfect summary of all of them.
Yeah, because my pay rate is the same as yours, so, and I'm not a lawyer.
I, I, I was presuming that that would be an unfair ask of you. But, but if you're volunteering, I won't stop.
Got nothing else to do.
Well, okay, so you, 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 you take a whack at it too, well, we'll, we'll all take a whack at it together, and Stephanie will as well, and then we can, we can all compare notes on the tenth. As to where we are.
Okay.
Does that sound like a good plan?
Thank you.
I could just add, when you look through the, the draft conditions that have been proposed, I think you will see, I, I did try to incorporate. The ones from peer review, so hopefully you'll be like, oh, there it is, okay, so, um.
That, 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 that will, that will be wonderful, we'll be thrilled to find that. And, and meanwhile, we will have, uh, the, the applicant and also the, the butters and the various concerned parties who are looking over our shoulders on, on, on the, on the line, and. You know, when we say, when we forget, for example, to put in anything that the cons comm suggested, perhaps even Michael Lesser will raise his hand and remind us. As, as he is want to do. Alright.
Okay.
Then, Mr. Speaking, speaking, Mr. Lesser raising his hand.
Uh, Michael Lesser, fifty-four Flower Street, uh, probably just wearing a resident hat. Is there, in terms of looking at what the final plans are? Is there, I can't tell if there's been a little tweaking of the stall mortar stuff, or of the different landscape, or the lighting plans, is there? Desire to put all that into sort of one final set of plans that are gonna be what is referenced by the. Permit, so that, and any changes like the long-term pollution, the, the PPP plan that's part of stall mortar, or this, that there's a. Sort of a final set of the documents that will be referenced, and that we could also use to just check against things that were discussed.
I think the long-term pollution is part of the, the state. Permitting process.
Right, but, 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 but that would be part, part of this inventorying. And Ms. Kiefer, somewhere in here, uh, but I, I'm not finding it right away, you probably said it. And the final plans are, are here, they are, it's item eight two, right, item eight two, so, um. Jeannie, you can probably forward to Michael Lesser and anyone else who asks for it, the, the draft decision that Ms. Kiefer circulated. And if you go to page eight, Michael, there's a, a list of the plans and when they were last revised. That you can look at.
Okay, fine.
Most of the last revisions appear to be April twenty-third, April twenty-sixth. April twenty-sixth, March twenty-sixth, so you should be able to tie that into what you're looking for.
Fine, and I assume they're all online at the site, on the town website.
Think so, right, JD?
Think so.
Not a yes.
We'll find out.
Maybe tonight.
And, 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 and if they're not, I'm sure, uh, you know, the board members aren't allowed to discuss the project in between. Various members of the public who say, wait, my letter about XYZ isn't in there, or, uh. Th- this, this plan that's supposed to be revised at this date isn't, isn't the revised version, that stuff, or that mechanical stuff, you can go back and forth on with Jeannie. In between the meeting, and, and we encourage people to do so, so that there's as little misunderstanding as possible.
Okay, I'm glad you made that, that clarification, we're not, uh, soliciting, uh. Revisions from the public that we're gonna be going through. Thank you.
You know, we are not.
Okay.
The hearing is closed, we are not asking for public commentary on our, on our decision. Uh, except to the extent that there is a, a mechanical error, um, such as. That plan reference is wrong, or the plan reference is right, but the plan that's on, on file is not that plan, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I do not think we should, and I'm, I'm looking at my other board members, I also don't think we can, uh, just solicit. Uh, general input from the public, like, well, how do you think we should write this? It's our decision, we have to write it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, uh, having said that, so the, um. I, I'd like a, a, a sense of the board vote that we're gonna try as, as hard as we can to go down the grant with conditions route. Um, and after that, I'd probably entertain a motion to adjourn, but first, let's, let's do that, I, I move that we. Pursue the tact of, uh, granting this project with conditions, that's not a motion to grant it with conditions, but it, it is a sense to the board, so the developer knows which way we're going. Any discussion, any second?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor with the sense of the board motion, we have to do this by roll call, Novak votes aye.
Stafford, aye.
Fitch, aye.
Alright, so that is the sense of the board and the direction we're going. Unless there's other business. Remember, the public or the applicant think we're missing something or off the rails here, now's a good time to raise your hand, you can't put in new evidence. Okay. I would be thrilled to entertain a motion to adjourn, gentlemen.
I will move to adjourn.
A second, uh.
Okay, we're, if, if we so vote, we're off to June ten, six PM.
Thank you very much.
All in favor, aye? Novak votes aye.
Stafford, aye.
Fitch, aye.
Alright, everybody, thank you for all your hard work, uh, we're not done yet, but we're getting there.
Thank you.
Goodnight, everybody.
Goodnight.